Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of Somersville City Council on this 13th day of May 2024. This time, I'd like to welcome all of our guests, and boy, do we have a lofty agenda, so we're going to bust right into it. The first item on that agenda is consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on April 22 of 2024.
Mr. Prudential waived the reading.
Okay, council, we got a motion. The motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented in your packet? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Did anybody sign up that might have said yes, but it's not on the agenda?
No.
Okay. No public comment tonight. Okay, at this time, I'd like to welcome the city's auditor, David Howell, to give us an update and a review of our 2223 fiscal year audit. David, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for having me here to see me. Once again, as I say every year for the camera, they put 10 pounds on you, so I'm a lot thinner than I look on camera. The audit went very successfully this year. We were able to gather all the information we needed. There was no missing documents or anything. Oddly enough, that happens quite often in an audit, but luckily, it's never happened here, not luckily, it's by design. Let's just jump right into it. On the independent auditor's report, first, does everybody get a copy of the audit from Cookie?
Yeah.
Anyone did not get a copy?
I want a paper copy.
Yeah, hardbound copy or PDF, either one?
Just PDF.
Okay. It's very important every year that you make sure that you get a copy of the audit. So that's, it's key to your oversight responsibilities. Some places, they don't share those things with the council. That's why I always, every year, make sure you got a copy.
Hey, Jim. I've got a copy. Harder looked at it. You want to look at it?
I'll just pull it up.
Yeah, David, what we do is because of all the information that we disseminate out of City Hall, we send it to them all in a file, and then, of course, they can individually request to have a hard copy if they would prefer a hard copy. And on the audit, we had to prefer a hard copy, and they were provided hard copy. So, City of Somersville, they are counseling, very transparent here, they get a copy of the audit, understanding without any reservation that that's their dual responsibility.
Yes, that has been my experience here. Every year, I ask that everyone, and they have gotten a copy. Basically, in our independent auditor's report, under opinion, it says we have audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities in each major fund of the City of Somersville as of for the year ended June 30, 2023, and related notes to the financial statements which collectively comprise the city's basic financial statements as listed in table contents. That's what you guys hired us to do, is to audit the financial statements. Again, we weren't hired to find fraud or conduct a forensic audit. We were here to do a financial audit. A forensic audit or fraud audit is a completely different animal than a financial audit. So, I was wanting to say that in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, and each major fund of the city outside of June 30, 2023, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable cash flows thereof for the year, and then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Basically, the opinion on the financial statements that we gave, it's called an unmodified opinion. So, there was nothing, there were no material misstatements that was presented in the financial statements that needed to be made, so everything, everything looked good. So, we didn't even give them another clean opinion again this year. I'll jump over to the last few pages. Page 63 specifically. Now, this year was a single audit, meaning that you expended, that the city expended over $750,000 of federal money. So, it kicked it over into that single audit requirement. In the future, that threshold is going to get raised to $1 million. So, it might help out as far as when you're needing to have a single audit or not. So, in the financial statements, section two, we had no financial statement findings that were required to be reported under governmental audit standards. From section three, we had no federal warrant findings or question costs that were required to be reported under the single audit act or the uniform guidance section. So, that's, again, the staff got commended and congratulated, actually. Your job, I guess, will be to condemn or not. My job will be to congratulate.
I think we over said it.
We've got to know our places in life. So, anyway, that's what I report. If there's any questions or you'd like me to go in on something more in a little deep, more detailed, we'd be happy to do that.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, David, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your professionalism and getting this done for us. Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is approval of the engineering agreement between the City of Somersville and Thrasher Engineering for the Somersville Sports Complex. At this time, I would invite Sam Rich to the podium to highlight and review it with us prior to approval.
Good evening. My name is Sam Rich, project manager with the Thrasher Group. I've been working with Mayor Schaefer and a steering committee on the planning of this recreation complex for quite some time now. So, this is an exciting milestone. We're ready to actually launch into the engineering design and final planning of the complex, as well as get this thing, as we call bid-ready for contractors to put a bid on and then start construction this calendar year. This agreement is for our professional services, which will cover what we are referring to as Phase One and Phase Two of the complex. What that will entail is construction of the mountain bike trail system, the trailhead for the mountain bike trails, as well as the soccer complex, which will be a complex that has various configuration of the youth fields for competition, practice, and then all the associated roads, infrastructure, parking areas, miscellaneous items that go along with that complex as well. This is a full-service professional agreement that would cover, our role would be to perform survey work, design, engineering work, permitting work. We would act as the city's representative to bid the project, so we would handle the advertisements, we would run the pre-bid meeting, we would review the bids and then offer a recommendation to the city, present to recommend to the qualified low bidder for the project. We would also provide construction administration services during construction, which would include regular progress meetings, reviewing submittals, answering RFIs, and inspecting the quality of the work performed by the selected contractor. This project's going to entail some dirt moving in pretty substantial quantities for the first couple phases, so we also included project representative services, which would include a representative of our company being on site full-time for a period of construction to perform compaction testing and observing underground utilities that are going in. We always say you want to make sure somebody's there to inspect the things that you can't see later. It's a lot different, you know, water lines, sewer lines that are going underground, you need to be there while they're going in to make sure that it's being done right and not something you can check later without digging it up. So, this agreement we have provided is a standard DJCDC agreement between owner and engineer for professional services, so it's a standard form agreement, standard form agreement that we use with many municipalities. Our specific services and an outline is broken down in Exhibit C. Basically, our total services for the project will be $980,000. That is all of the services that I've just walked through. Quick breakdown, survey and environmental, $45,000; geotechnical investigation, $60,000; design and permitting, $435,000; bidding, $15,000; construction administration, $100,000; inspection and materials testing, $245,000; mountain bike trail permitting and construction administration, $60,000; community engagement, $20,000. Just to elaborate on those last two, the mountain bike trail design will not be done by Thrasher. That is a specialty service that another consultant will provide. There are several companies nationwide that focus in designing construction of mountain bike trails. We're trying to vet out now and working with our mountain bike steering committee leader, Michael Young, who we're going to use for that service, but Thrasher will be responsible for bidding that contract. Because it's a city project, it will still have to be publicly bid to qualified mountain bike trail construction companies, so we will manage the construction and permitting associated with that as well. Community engagement, there is an intention to do some community surveys and community open house, town-to-town hall-type things where we would present the design. Right now, the design that we have is just something we've taken about this much feedback from a lot of different people, and we've come up with a design, but we want this to be a community-led project. We want people's input and feedback on the design, so we will also lead that effort here in the near future as far as finalizing the master plan for the overall property. We estimate construction, this to be around a $10 million total project, just to give you a magnitude of the amount of work that we're talking about here. Soccer fields, right now, we're trying to budget that they would all be artificial turf, which would increase playing during poor weather seasons, as well as reduce maintenance on the city to take care of such a large natural grass area, so that there is a significant cost associated with creating this project. That has been currently envisioned in Phase One and Two. Not included in this agreement would be future phases, Phase Three and beyond, we'll call it, would include basketball courts, pickleball courts, baseball fields, walking trails, just other things that are part of that overall master plan, but not what we're looking at trying to bite off in these first couple phases. So, with that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. That's just kind of a high-level overview of the agreement and what our services will be for this project.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to add, counsel, before, if you have questions, is our city attorney has completely reviewed this contract. Frankly, the only thing that he asked me to review, and I have with Cookie, is the invoice and payment dealing here to make sure that it was with the protocol of the city's finances and the way we make payments, and Cookie and I have reviewed it, and this is totally fine. I mean, this fits with our protocol here at City Hall, so just to let you know that this contract, and Greg said the same thing that Sam said, it's a standard agreement that you would see between owner and engineer. Any questions?
You said $10 million. Is that for Phase One and Two?
Yes. And that's, that's right now what we're estimating total project cost to be, including these fees and a contingency. That's, that's about where our estimates came in. Certainly, that could be more or less. That's what we're going to, that's what we're going to figure out, and we're working with. The next agenda item is the bond council that you all will be working with to figure out exactly what we want to design to for these first couple phases. We may do things like bidding certain parts of the artificial turf as deductive alternates to save money. Maybe we'll only do portions of those steel on this turf and then do the rest of them as grass, because turf is something that can be added later. That led me to something I left out, that we have also applied for congressional directed spending requests for this project for the Phase Two portion. Those take time to be reviewed, and once you get the award, you have to go through their environmental processes, so maybe it could be two years before we even have access to those funds. So, part of what our, when we get done with the design of Phase One and Phase Two and figure out what we can build right now, part of what we'll be trying to figure out is if we do get that money, how we're going to spend them. So, it may be that we do a little bit of turf now and finish it later and add lighting later. That's, that's all the stuff we've got to still figure out.
And they have many soccer fields.
So, what we're looking at right now would be basically, I think, the equivalent of three full-size fields, but they would be catered to different age groups, so we would have different striping configurations that you would have a series of fields that would be, you could play, let's say, six, eight and under games at the same time on one of those fields, or a different variation of 14 and under. So, we're working with the, I think he's the-
Jeremy Vandy.
Jeremy is the president of the local soccer association.
And he's the chairman of the steering committee, of the soccer complex.
So, what he is doing is basically providing us, when we have tournaments, here are the teams and the age groups that we're trying to cater, and here's how many fields we can keep booked up at a time if we have tournaments. So, we're kind of trying to base our design off a program that he's providing. To answer your question, as many as we can get, that's within reason. This property, we're performing stream and wetland delineations as part of this, our services here to figure out if there are areas that we can fill in to grow the footprint of our original master plan in terms of developable acreage. I mean, soccer fields are basically dead flat areas, so we've got some hillside on this property we're trying to navigate, and once we get those delineations back, we'll have a little bit better idea of how many fields we can build.
We had a, we had a meeting last week with the chair of the soccer and the trails, Michael and Jeremy, and quite frankly, I think Sam was, I was, quite impressed on the information they brought to the meeting, that they had already vetted through their committee, committees, the rest of their committees. And furthermore, the other piece of that that Sam highlighted, even when the committee gets done, before it's a final piece, we'll have, we'll have a community meeting. We'll open it up and bring the community in and say, hey, this is what's going to happen, just to see if there's any last-minute input or changes that might come as a result of the community. One of the important pieces of this is it's not being built by government, it's truly being built by people that have interest in the citizens of our community, as all aspects of the park will be. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so, counsel, obviously, this is what the cost is for these phases, but the other thing that's yet to be determined is what our borrowing capacity is going to be. As I've mentioned before, I'll go ahead and say again, we're working with bond council to get the ordinances ready, and then what we've got to do is figure out the financial structure on what the actual borrowing capacity of the city's going to be. We're looking at anywhere from $5 to $10 million to start with, and obviously, if it ends up being five vice 10, then you have to reconfigure what it is you're going to get accomplished with the five, and then everything will be adjusted as so, but eventually, that's what the whole project looks like. I feel totally confident that the dollar amount right now is probably somewhere around eight. We just have to see if we can get it to that $10 million figure. As I've mentioned before, I've met with two financial institutions already that say, pretty much without reservation, they feel our capacity to borrow against, these are tax bonds issued on our sales tax, that we've got the capacity to go to $10 million. What I'm concerned about is the short-term repayment until there's some windfall, other things that happen here in the city that free up some revenue. But all, all those decisions will be made at a later date, once we get a little bit farther down the road with bond council and then actually go to the, you know, in some kind of a bid. I guess the first thing we've got to figure out is what our capacity is, which I'll get approved by you all, and then we'll put it out to the banks for bid. Okay. All right, Sam, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Somersville and Thrasher Engineering.
Move to approve.
Got a first and a second. Any additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
If you want to take off in the morning, welcome.
I'll take ground.
Okay, good deal. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the engagement letter, Steptoe and Johnson. And we're actually working with John Stump with Steptoe and Johnson. This is a standard agreement to engage them as our bond council. Counsel, if you have time to dive into this, you will see that this has no dollar amount in it. The dollar amount and arrangement will come at a later time when it's decided upon how much money we're borrowing. So, he addresses that in here, that this is just the engagement letter, so it allows him to go ahead and move forward during our work, and then, of course, before, before we actually seal the deal with the ordinance, he'll bring a supplemental that will be the charges for the bond council. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move. Second.
Got a first and a second. Counsel, do you have any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Next item on the agenda is draw request number two, City of Somersville, CDBG, MIT, Stormwater Project, Kentucky Road, and I invite Amanda Smar from Region Four Planning and Development. Welcome, Amanda.
Good afternoon. So, we'll give you a project update first before we dive into the draw request number two. So, the project update on this is currently the design process is complete and the calculations are complete. They're waiting on comments back from DOH to finalize that design process. We're concurrently, at the same time, going to go through the environmental process so that that's taken care of, and we can go through the state office to make sure that the construction funds are available once we get those comments back from DOH. So, the project is moving. Everything's moving forward. We're just waiting on some comments back from DOH to finalize that, that design process.
Okay.
All right, so for draw request number two, you'll have $8,575.51 from an invoice from Region Four Planning and Development Council, and then you'll also have an invoice from Thrasher Group for $28,000. And that'll be a total of 35, oh, sorry, $36,575.51 for draw request number two.
So, the total request amount for this draw is $36,575.51.
Correct.
I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second. Counsel, do you have any questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Now, what I would like to say, counsel, especially, we have a visitor here tonight that I'm very sensitive to, a concerned visitor, there is some frustration with this project and the time that it's taken, and even waiting on permitting now and so on and so forth. We had a public meeting last year and invited the citizens from Kentucky Road to the meeting and said we would be going to construction, and of course, we don't even have it out to bid yet. So, you know, I want people to know that, you know, dealing with the government's very interesting at times and very challenging at times, and I'm very frustrated with this project and how it's moved along, especially from the inception of the approval of the project. So, in that, we have a meeting set up for Friday, and we're going to try to review things and hammer some things out and get this thing to bid into construction. Because what's unfortunate about it is, and I want people to know that we do worry about it, we do care about it, you know, every time we get a rain, people on Kentucky roads or properties are being flooded. And it's not simplistic flooding, it's serious flooding. And so, you know, we're going to, we're going to, once again, put the hammer to this project and see if we cannot get it out to bid and get it to construction, because ultimately, you know, I don't think anything's purposefully, but just sometimes, government takes longer than it should, and this is definitely one of those times. So, Amanda, I appreciate you getting that meeting set up for Friday, and we'll try to get with the engineer and make sure that anything else that can be done will be done now, so that, you know, we don't get back from DOH and then we find out there's something else we've got to do. So, hopefully, this Friday, we'll dot some i's and cross some t's, maybe put some pressure on DOH to get our review done, so we can get this project out to bid and get under construction. And I'm hoping that still there's time that we can say, say to these people that we're still on track to make that happen in 2024, so. Amanda, appreciate all you do.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks. Okay, the next item on the agenda, Somersville Building Appointments, Building Commission Appointments. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Don McKenzie to the Somersville Building Commission for a five-year term that'll expire May 1 of 2029.
Move.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Reappoint Tom Toller to the Somersville Building Commission for a five-year term expiring May 1 of 2029.
So, move.
Got a first and a second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Last but not least, reappoint Fletcher Harold to the Somersville Building Commission for a five-year term expiring May 1 of 2029.
Move.
Got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. I would just like to add, appreciate the past service of these three gentlemen. They have been so diligently willing to serve and continue to serve and serve the city in a good way, so we appreciate all of them considering and allowing us to reappoint them for another term. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Water User Agreement for the City of Somersville and Bright Enterprise, Inc. And so, there is no question, this is the State Park property. Counsel, you should have that agreement. This agreement has gone back and forth and been approved by council, and of course, we have in there what was important to us, that their average gallon usage would not go above 15,000 gallons per day, and that has a lot to do with the part of the system that they draw down. So, it's in the contract, and so, I would ask that, entertain a motion for approval of the Water User Agreement, City of Somersville and Bright Enterprise, Inc. First and a second. Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Municipal Sewer User Agreement, City of Somersville and Bright Enterprise, Inc. This has also been, this also is an agreement that has been vetted by our attorney and approved, so I'll entertain a motion.
Move.
First and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. The next item on the agenda is council grant awards, fiscal year 2425. These are the grants for the next fiscal year. So, counsel, what we can do is we'll read down through them and put some sums down, and of course, the total sum that we're working with is $50,000. So, I'll just read them off, and if you'll kind of give what you, what you're thinking, we'll go with that and try to come to consensus and move on down the line. The first one is Children's Home Society of West Virginia. They requested $10,000.
Just a question on that, because I think we had two, and would the Children's Home Society of West Virginia, could it possibly fall under the OPOA money that we receive?
I researched that, and it does not.
It does not. I think it does not. That's what I mean. Well, I'm going to go over on that, but I had that.
Okay, counsel, I'm looking for a number. Children's Home Society.
$4,000.
$4,000. Got a $4,000 and a $5,000.
I had four, so I'm fine, but I mean, four. Like I said, I'm over it.
So, I'm going to write down $4,000. I heard three fours. I'll write down $4,000. Love Works, they requested five.
Four.
I had 35, but four's fine.
I had 35.
Okay, counsel, give me a number.
35.
35? Nicholas County High School Athletics Department, they requested five.
Four.
I had 25.
25.
I had a question.
Okay.
Is Board of Education putting anything in on this?
Yes, they did.
How much?
I don't have that with me. They discussed it, I mean, they put a significant amount, I believe, into it to get it-
To me, I don't think it's our problem. I think that's their problem, not ours. I'm not against it, but I just think they need to come and put more skin in the game.
So, I did not carry the grant applications in here, and so, I don't know. Stevie, you say they did.
I believe they did. They had the initial cost of it. If I remember correctly, I wish one of them was there to answer that question, because-
I don't know, like 15 grand?
I think, because at this point, this is two, if I remember correctly, it was to help with the initial subscription.
It just seems like an awful lot of money, maybe. It just seems like an awful lot of money, but.
Because it's a much more expensive, because they already have the camera systems, they had the initial cost of that in. The main thing was to be the subscriptions of.
The subscription's thirteen thousand a year.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got one that says no. What number do we want to use?
I have twenty-five hundred.
That's what I have.
That's what I have.
Okay, twenty-five hundred. New Beginnings Resource Center, they requested fifteen thousand.
Four.
I had five, but I found a four.
I've got four.
Nicholas County Community Foundation, five thousand.
I had five. That's what we did last year, too.
I had four.
I've got five. Things are up here.
Nicholas County Fair, ten thousand.
I had five.
I got four and five.
So I heard a four and two fives, it's five?
Yeah.
We'll have to go back and make sure I'm not over fifty. Nicholas County Family Resource Network requested twenty-five thousand.
I've got four.
I've got five.
I have four.
Yeah, those up here. Yeah, I'll calculate it. Okay, I put down four thousand. I heard two fours. Nicholas County Senior Center, thirty-four ninety-nine.
I put thirty-five hundred dollars on there just to round it up a buck.
I had three.
Got a three, got a thirty-five.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-five. Thirty-five it is. Nicholas County Shop with the First Responder, twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
Nicholas Intervention Coalition, that one was, we're not going to do that one.
I agree.
Yeah. We can, we can, if that's funded, it'll be funded out of our OPO money's. Nicholas Old Main Foundation, five thousand four hundred and twenty-four.
I said the five thousand four twenty-four to pay for the eighties.
I have.
Did Old Main, you say?
Yes, sir.
I've got four then.
I have four.
Okay, four thousand. Okay. The next one, the Rotary Club withdrew their application. The next is Somersville Christmas Store, five thousand.
I had five thousand.
I had five thousand.
The Somersville Public Library, six thousand.
I've got three.
That's, that's what I have.
I have two.
Two threes and a two. Three thousand.
How much?
Three thousand. Somersville Tailgate Market Association, thirty-one hundred.
I've got twenty-five hundred.
That's what I have as well.
Wally Squadron, one thousand.
One thousand.
One thousand.
And the WVU Nicholas County Extension Service, five thousand.
I've got twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five as well.
Twenty-five hundred. Okay. Now, we got a total coming.
Is it possible to raise our count to fifty-two grand? Is that a raise of two thousand dollars? Is that?
It is a possibility, but we raised it once already.
Forty to fifty.
Yeah.
To be able to fund all of them, I mean, this is something that we would, we would consider maybe.
Maybe what?
I'm, I'm doing some math there and see if I have.
If you give him two thousand bees, you spend thirty thousand dollars. That's funding everybody.
Sorry, say that again?
I said if you give a fund, give two thousand dollars to bees, that's thirty thousand dollars. That's funding everybody.
I did it four of our times and still comes out fifty.
Take those numbers and take a hundred and thirty-three dollars off of each one of them square.
Okay, counsel, let me tell you what, what we can do. And, and I don't want to set the precedence of doing this, okay? We raised it ten thousand already, which was a change in the budget. We could do another budget amendment, put two thousand more dollars in. But what I would like to do going forward is come in with a dollar amount and present that dollar amount. Because I think that all of these are worthy to be funded for more. And it just sets a precedence that, you know, you come in and ask and the more you ask, the more they're going to raise the bar. And, and the other thing that I'm uber-sensitive to is we've got a lot of other projects going on. I thought, same thing, we'll just amend. We've got a lot of other projects going on in the city. Our rec park, our sidewalk projects. As a matter of fact, I'm giving you, you know, getting ready to give you some more information. So all of these are worthy causes and worth to be fully funded. So what we'll do is when we do our carry forward, we'll add two thousand more dollars. But I do not want this to be a precedent going forward because, you know, yes, we're in the position that we can do that, but we also have major financial undertakings with projects that we have in our hands. So we'll do the two thousand this year, but let's not make this a precedent going forward. Okay? So we'll leave everything the way it is and we'll add the two thousand dollars if we carry forward. So what I need is, I needed, I need a motion to approve, and let's just go back down through them to make sure everybody's on the same page. Children's Home Society, four thousand. Love Works, thirty-five hundred. Nicholas County Athletic Department, twenty-five hundred. New Beginnings Resource Center, four thousand. Nicholas County Community Foundation, five thousand. Nicholas County Fair, five thousand. Nicholas County Family Resource Network, four thousand. Nicholas County Senior Center, thirty-five hundred. Nicholas County Shop with the First Responder, twenty-five hundred. Old Main Foundation, four thousand. Somersville Christmas Store, five thousand. Somersville Public Library, three thousand. Somersville Tailgate Market Association, twenty-five hundred. Wally Squadron, one thousand. And WVU Nicholas County Extension Service, twenty-five hundred. Bringing our grant total to fifty-two thousand dollars. If somebody will move to approve those grants.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Counsel, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Just put that two thousand dollars in the last carry forward. Or the next carry forward, not the last. Okay. Let's see, we got the grant awards taken care of, recorders report.
Okay. Got some new business in Somersville in April. Would like to share that with you. And one thing that has picked up, I just want everybody to know, and some, some folks in the, in the house tonight may have some businesses or some local things happening around town. It's important to know that these mobile units are becoming, you know, quite frequent in our areas. They're great, they're well-liked. I know the soccer tournament that just happened, they enjoy having those, those units, mobile units up there. It's difficult these days with volunteers to get concessions, stand help, and it's just easier for them to go ahead with these, with these folks. And I know that they're actually working together and some of these mobile units are actually giving monies back to whatever the event is happening. So we, we need to make sure that we are getting licenses for these, these folks that are coming in and getting business licenses. We've done a pretty nice job. There's some folks that are the same people doing these, and we've asked them to help us in getting some of those licenses because they don't always know when they come into town. And what we don't want to do is to walk up during an event and confront them about a license when they're trying to sell lunch and things of that nature. So if you know of somebody and somebody asks you about these food mobile trucks, just say, hey, they're fantastic, make sure they get a business license, okay? That business license for your information is ten dollars and fifty cents, okay? So it's, it's not, it's not a big fee.
I think we should probably pass that on to the soccer folks, right?
Uh, I think they know. I think that the folks that they're using, we have business licenses for all of those.
Okay.
So we're, we're in pretty good shape there. But yeah, I think it's a great idea. I'll pass that along to Bailey, or, yeah, Jeremy and Eric Gabb, those folks, when they do that. As a matter of fact, you know, in listening to them the other day, they mentioned that, but, which I did not even think about, it was a grant. In the meeting that we had the other day, they mentioned, you know, concession stands are difficult and they mentioned these units. And it just made us, it opened it up. I think the mayor, he pointed it out, you know, hey, that we need to set this up so that they have, you know, power outlets and things of that nature for them to come in and set up. So it's, it's used a lot and, and hey, the food is good. Wanted to announce, Mayor, the next planning and zoning meeting will be June third, hoping to get some things resolved in that meeting that I can then give to you, that's a Monday, give to you for your Wednesday, yeah, for your, what you put out on Wednesday, your, your minutes, right? Or your, or the meeting agenda.
Yeah, you're heading.
Agenda, sorry.
Yeah, I think that's.
I think that's what I was trying to say. Yeah, so if we can, if we get some things approved on Monday, I'll be able to give you that for Wednesday and then it'll be on the next agenda for the next meeting.
The tenth.
The tenth, yes.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, thank you, Gary. Yeah, you know, just to highlight again, you know, the, the meeting that we had, the initial meeting that we had, and I know a lot of people stand in, in wait wanting to meet. We will at some point in time have a meeting where we bring everybody, all the, all the chair people to the park to kind of give them an idea again. With, with our engineer, we'll hold a public meeting. But as Gary highlighted in that meeting that we had last week, you know, going to the people that know what we need, you know, I said something in the, in the meeting about concession stands and they spoke, and I said, we don't need concession stands. What we need is setups like you got over here where you can pull these food trucks in for tournaments and stuff because soccer people don't want to run concession stands.
Nor do Lily people.
Yeah. So there you go. Might be a new thing for Lily, get for the food trucks, not, but anyway, so that's why it's so important that the people that are out there making it happen are involved in the design and working with our engineers so that at the end of the day, we truly got what meets these day and ages for moving forward with the state-of-the-art facilities that, what I can promise, we're going to build. Okay, so moving right along, counsel, as you know, we put the rainy day fund out for bid. And I will tell you that we have awarded the bid to Community Trust. They were the highest bidder. We put it back into a CD, the Rainy Day Fund, for twenty-three months, and the rate we got was four point five eight. And what we actually rolled into that new CD was one million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Did y'all get that number? I see you're right. Did I go too fast? So you could just say it was, you know, one million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand and some change. And it's, it's going to be there for twenty-three months at the rate of four point five eight. And we thank them and of course, all the banks that bid on that rainy day fund. The other thing, counsel, I want to tell you that Old Main Gym Floor, the asbestos abatement part of it has been completed. It was completed last Friday. I have before me all of the documentation, including the, the last, you know, all the environmental that it's, that it's cleared, the air test, the whole nine yards. It has officially been, the asbestos, asbestos abatement is completed, it's been cleared, and today it was turned over to the flooring company. So you can see and, and, you know, and everything's on schedule, so by the end of May, the new basketball floor should be in. So we're glad to have that under our belt now as well. Let me talk about the Webster Road Sidewalk Project. Was notified today that Phase One, the contractor, said that he's estimating start on June tenth. So I put that out there in a real serious way because of traffic control and everything coming down Webster Road, you know, there will be some disturbance in that area for a while. So I do recommend if people are in a hurry, especially when the school bus is running, you know, it can get slow through there, you might want to take alternate routes. But June tenth is the start date and of course, the completion date is a date in November. In a real exciting way, the city was informed last week that Phase Two of that sidewalk, we were awarded another five hundred and forty thousand dollars of federal funds, which is eighty percent of the project. And our match to that next phase is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, the city's match. So when I talk about, we got a lot of things out there that we've got coming and going, this is one of the things that we just recently were awarded, which brings that second phase project to a total of six hundred and seventy-five thousand. As you well know, talking in location, this project takes us to the pond there, the Tully Pond. This next phase, I'm hoping will get us up past the driveway, maybe even somewhere by the Young property, Sari Young's property. So, and then I will also tell you that we are submitting a letter of intent, which is due by May twenty-second for third phase, which would hopefully take us from there on down the road as far as we can go. So good things are happening with the sidewalk. Again, we're excited that we were awarded this, the second round of funding. And by the twenty-second of this month, we'll file our letter of intent for a third round of funding. And of course, that total application is due by June.
Twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth. Yeah, June twenty-sixth. Thanks, Andy. Okay, so we're, so that gives you an update on that. The other thing I want to tell you, counsel, is there's a ribbon cutting scheduled for Route Nineteen Custom Cycles. And that's in the old building there on Broad Street, where the old cycle shop used to be. Would ask you to come out to it. It is on May twenty-eighth at twelve noon. So would love to have your participation in that. Let's see, the other thing, counsel. It's, it's May twenty-eighth at twelve noon. The other thing, counsel, as required by law, I received today an intent for federal funding. This is Rose. This is Rosemary Apartments, and so they have officially notified me that they're applying for federal funding to expand Rosemary Apartments. They have an additional 2.29 acres that's set in behind the three buildings that are there now. This project is to put three more buildings of similar, similar type buildings, to put three more in there, housing the same number of people on that 2.29 acres that's in behind the current Rosemary Apartments. So I received that communication in the mail today of their letter intent to move forward with the financing and that project. So to bring some more, another whole set of apartments there at the Rosemary location on North Broad Street. The only other thing I have, counsel, let me make sure I hit everything, the only other thing I have is a reminder, we intended to get it on your agenda, please remember that there is no, there will be no city council meeting on May 27th, as that is Memorial Day. It's a holiday, so that meeting is officially canceled. Okay, that concludes the mayor's report.
Also, is there some music that'll happen before our next meeting?
Yes, very good point, Chuck. Yes, June 6th, right? June 7th, yes, I should have had that on my notes. Thank you, Gary, I got it over here. Hey, listen, on June 7th is the kickoff of Music at the Pavilion. Again, that's going to happen with kids kicking it off. There's a whole night of activities planned that night for the youth, it's all free to the public. Music at the Pavilion, brought our team together again, Mary Ann and of course, Mike Gregory, our talent agent. I think Mary Ann told me that Mike had all weeks booked up, but one, but one opening. Great time, listen, this is a great time of socialization and good music, inviting everybody to come down. This is a really neat kickoff, Mary Ann put it together last year, bringing the kids out, and so we're doing the same thing this year, so come out and listen to the kids sing. We've actually got some kids that are going to be singing that night, and it's a pretty neat deal, so thank you, Gary, for reminding me about my stuff there.
Well, you've, I've been in some meetings with you lately, and you've, you've said that.
Yeah, Music at the Pavilion, so again, we're excited with another good lineup this year, a lot of great entertainment, local entertainment, and the key part of it is, is some different group brings free refreshments every Friday night, and it's free. So come out for the free awesome entertainment downtown Somersville, starting June 7th, 6th, and that night, normally it runs 6:30 to 8:30, but that night, with the kids kickoff and all the additional activities, it starts at 6. Okay, that concludes the mayor's report. Counsel reports? Okay, having done, I will end with this, tomorrow is a very important day in our nation, and so what I ask people to do is exercise your right to vote. We're so thankful with Memorial Day around the corner, that's the cause of the cancellation of our next meeting, and all those men and women that served this country and paid the ultimate sacrifice for the freedoms that we have, and one of the most important things we can do is exercise our right to vote. So I encourage everybody to get out to vote tomorrow. City Hall is closed because this is a designated pool area, so with that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Thanks, counsel, have a great evening.